And I'm just gonna make Sally and Yechin co-host, just in case something goes awry. I realize Yechin have a complex schedules evening.
Uh, I can manage it and then um just hand it over if I need to go.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Yechin, I did.
Hi.
Sally, hey Nick, hey Nancy.
Um Kurt just uh text me saying he he's putting a baby to bed.
He's gonna be in a bit?
I'm not hearing anybody, is that me?
Yes, it is you Sally.
Yeah, I fixed it.
Okay, Yechin, could you repeat that thing about Kurt?
Oh, he's putting a baby to bed, so he'll be alone in right.
Lucky him, um, okay. So. Oh, was that, did he have an invitation for how long that might take? Couple minutes?
You'd say.
And any news on Nick?
Nick is here.
I am admitting him right now.
He was here, he seems to have disappeared.
Yeah, I think I just admitted him or maybe someone else did. Here we go.
Okay. Um, so why don't we um in the interests of getting to bed early, why don't we? I'm gonna start recording.
Recording in progress.
And uh let's see.
I can share the agenda.
Yes, please.
Um.
Okay. So um. Welcome everyone to the uh February twenty eighth planning board meeting. Of the town of Winchester, we are being recorded both via Zoom and via Windcamp, thank you very much Windcamp. Um, so why don't I, we have a quorum, so why don't we uh do a real call date? Um, let's see, Nicholas.
Present.
Um Sally Dale.
I'm here.
Yechin Scott.
Present.
Uh Jim Curious, I am the chair, I'm also present and we are just waiting on Kurt. Um, I think we can move forward. Um, so. Oh wow, um, we have. Right, so we set up some time for approval of minutes, but we don't have any minutes to approve. So um we've got about twenty minutes prior to a review in our ZBA petitions. Uh, we have a couple of those coming up and then we have a lot of time set aside for looking at the two articles, actually there are three articles, um, one of them's uh just a bookkeeping one for this coming spring town meeting plus some that we should consider in the future. And then uh we will talk about our town planners um search. Uh, there were some um discussions I had with town council last week which bear upon how we should move forward and we'll be talking about that. And uh. So, why don't we um, oh, I say uh welcome to also to Nancy Pocari, our recording secretary is with us. Uh. We had Brian Mantor, Brian, Brian is still here, our assistant town engineer. And uh also with us this evening is our liaison from the Chamber of Commerce, Richard Luke, who's also before us for his ZBA petition. Um, so uh in terms of updates, uh I don't have that many, so I know um Sally, you had hopefully an update about AD working group, the only update I want us to talk about is that um the MBTA um multifamily community section three A working group will be meeting, uh looks like it won't be until the end of March, maybe early April, there was a um confusion, there was email issues and they were unable to get the um GIS data, the consultant rather was unable to get the GS data um a little less until I guess this past week. And they are going to be using that to um help us determine um what sort of zoning changes we might need to make in order to be in compliance with the MBTA um multifamily zoning act. Section three A as we call it. Anyway, I will turn it over to um Sally.
So the uh update you're looking for, let me share my screen, is um this will stop others' screen sharing, do you want to continue, continue? Yes, um and so what we have is um. Why isn't it here? I thought it was all right here. Hold on. Well, open recent, I had it all open, sorry. Here you go. Uh. Can you see that?
No.
Okay, so let me do Zoom. Share. Here it is, yay. Share. Okay, so what we have here is that the planning board um authorized me and, no, the accessory dwelling unit uh working group authorized me and um Felicity Tuttle, member of the group and also with the um housing partnership board, I believe, to come up with some language and she came up with some good points that I numbered and organized according to whether they were residency requirements having to do with permitting, certification, ownership and renting, uh design considerations, costs and financing, and Yechin came up with excellent graphics. Hey, that doesn't have the most recent one. What though is going on there? Well.
Sally, could you give us some context for this document? What is it?
Yes, so the when the zoning bylaw passed at November, in November town meeting, thank you Diab. And um we now wish to provide some guidance in the form of a handout that would be available as a trifold, this is not the final layout for it, um uh that would be available outside the building department so that people could um get information easily and be directed to the appropriate place in the zoning bylaws, which as you see here. Um, and so this has gone through um a couple of rounds of edits and there's still some questions on the table about this document. Um, and it's intended to be a handout and it's also going to be useful um when we do our summer booth at the farmer's market, when we have town day coming up, which is June, June third, I believe. Um, uh June second and third. Um, so this is a project that's in process, Michael Betancourt has reached out to the um um connect and connect, connect and commit group at the Winchester High School to find some um students who would be interested in helping with graphic design. Um, so Diab, did you want me to walk through all these points? It's kind of a lengthy detail.
No, no, I just, no, I think this is just, just uh an update so that people know what's going on.
Okay, so that's the update on that and um the the uh AD working group is meeting on the tenth at ten AM for anybody who's interested.
Yeah, so this will be, this is going to be an official product of the planning board, so we will come back to you all for um final review.
Right, and you can see that there's lots of steps involved still, we're just working on it. And also, the attorney general is not expected to make his ruling as to whether it meets with his standards until May fifteenth.
I hate to do this Sally, it's a her.
It is a her, Sally, 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 Sally. Yes. May fifteenth.
Okay. Um, I don't know, the last, what was our last male attorney general? Was it, was it Scott Harshman? Oh, a long time ago.
So one of the problems with that date is that I believe that the Housing Partnership Board um has planned a housing opportunities event at the Jenks for either May, uh. I can stop share, for either May, well, it's early in May and it's before, it proceeds when we anticipate the first date of being, hearing back from the attorney general, so we can say that this is draft, is it, because it's true that you can't get a building permit for an ADU until the attorney general has approved the law, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's my update on that. I have other updates, Diab, if you have patience.
I I have one thing I wanted to say, uh I do want to point out, as Sally pointed out, we are going to have a booth at town day, so um we're gonna hope that somebody will join us there. And Kurt has, Kurt has entered the building, um Kurt, you wanted to say hi, so you are officially part of the quorum.
I am here and present, hey guys.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, two, two quick updates, dog grooming and mass builds database, actually, let me take them in reverse order, the mass builds database is a big deliverable of the town that we missed for the past couple of years. And um if Brian were here, he would be, we would be helping him or he would be helping us, I don't know, but Yechin and I are working on filling out the database and I can um share kind of a vague picture really quick. Is that okay, Diab?
Well, I, we, we're, we're getting close to our time of seven thirty, what time do we have?
Seven thirty-five for ZBA petitions.
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple, I need a couple of minutes for something.
So that's one thing that Yechin and I are working on and the other thing that we're.
Can I add to that?
Yes, please.
It's really interesting, because Sally and I noticed that, you know, I think a lot of the people on the board didn't know, weren't too clear about this, but um the building department gets about, you know, seventy to ninety permit um applications per month and approximately like six to nine million dollars in in building improvements throughout town, only about a hundred thousand dollars in in fees. So it, and those are, those are sort of some of the stats that I I had no clue about, but we are, I think we should, we should all be sort of aware of.
Say it again, uh Yechin?
So each once, the building department gets approximately seventy to ninety permit applications.
For special, for special permits?
No, 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 just building permits, just, just to.
Okay, sure.
Whatever somebody needs to do and 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 has to get a building permit for, and so it's approximately like six to nine million dollars in impro- improvements on infrastructure or properties. And these are just um ones that you have to build a permit for, so things, there are lots of things that you don't need a permit for. So, and then in fees, the town gets approximately a hundred thousand dollars per one from that.
Wow, it's good to know.
Head is, Yechin, the building department has forwarded us their spreadsheets for all the building permits since January of twenty twenty and Yechin is going through the description field, finding the ones that would align with the um mass builds database, which we can talk about further when we're more ready to present our findings. But it has to happen, actually, we may not be able to, there's to do to them really fast, so Yechin and I will finish the research and then have to run it by Diab and maybe town manager and get it out.
Yeah, I don't know if I can identify me, but.
Well, just because.
Okay. So let me, um, we've got about six minutes, so I have, I have one quick thing, I hope it's quick, it's, it's um. I wanted to, excuse me, make a, make a couple of comments about our meeting last week. In part, I think because uh, well, for me at least, it was sort of an uncomfortable meeting. Um, I think because we were talking more, about more than just dot design and architecture. Um, we were talking about the human context in which design and architecture are created and interpreted. And uh one of the more unique things since I've been on the board is we actually had to deal sort of with the tension between architecture as a snapshot of history and uh recognition that that snapshot is is not necessarily is rather is only really representative of one viewpoint of history. And that is created with our context, um which explicitly excluded certain people. And it's, this is a difficult conversation, I think, for anyone to have and certainly it's in part because it is a difficult subject, we're dealing with um issues we don't ordinarily talk about. And it's words, you need to use the right words and finding the right words is important, but not always easy. It's also, I think, difficult because we were taught and socialized to see society and history written within a certain paradigm. And uh when that paradigm is challenged, it's, it's really often difficult to find one's bearing or to recognize what the problems with that paradigm might be. And although it's difficult, I think it's important that we keep having this discussion. It does affect people's lives, it affects their sense of happiness and their sense of belonging, so I think that's something that we need to continue having. Uh, one of the things I think that's difficult is that when we look at architecture, it's hard to, we sort of think about architecture and design as this static thing that's kind of disconnected from the people who have made it or the context in which it was built. But I think it's important that when we look at what we see around us, that it's what survived, what survived has really been put there by people who had the wealth and the power to put it there. Um, and when we look at those, those structures, what we see is a, is a narrow view of our history because it really, it was authored by the people who've had the power and the wealth to put those structures there and those who didn't are essentially erased from history. And when I, when we look at architecture and design, I think we have to look at more than just the lines and the elevations. Um, we have to look and see you know, what is the context in which they were created? And when we take a snapshot of time and we say, this is an important period of time, this is what we deem historically important. Then we have to look at the values that went into building that architecture, those buildings. Um, who was there and who wasn't there and we kind of have to look at our own values because we're making the decision as to why that's important or whether it's important. So, um. The only thing I think it's important is that when we, when we talk about Winchester residents, we have to try to remind ourselves who we're really talking about, are we talking about the people who were there when these buildings were there? Are we talking about the people who are in Winchester now? Um, what sort of values do they have? Um. There's no singular viewpoint of history, so um do current residents share the same values as those in the past? And if they are different, how do we mediate? There are some values that um we need to be able to have a discussion about how we figure out which values we take going forward. I think part of the choice we make when we make our decisions is to understand that there is excluded history and that it may be just as important as the included history. And uh again, there's no, no singular viewpoint, and so we have to make sure that when we look at viewpoints, that we make sure if there was an exclusion, a discrimination in the past, that we make sure we don't perpetrate, perpetuate that. Um, I, I know that our decisions can't change what happened in the past, but moving forward, we can change what comes up. Um, and just to finish off, um, I just want to note that our society doesn't make it easy for people who are seen as different, it's just, um, most societies don't, ours doesn't. Um, and I think bringing forward a viewpoint which challenges a dominant paradigm is is even more difficult. And um, I think Yechin has challenged us to see Winchester in a, through another perspective, uh based on another narrative and a, and a different appreciation of who we should include as equals in our society. And Yechin, I want to thank you for that, I think it's, it's an important voice and something I, I think we need to, into your hearing from in the future. No thanks.
Yeah, I, I agree, I actually did some uh look up on, on Google about the Asian exclusion uh act over the weekend. I think, I think I, I agree with Diab that it's really important for all of us on the planning board to be inclusive, welcoming, kind, uh no matter who we're talking about. And uh I think it's a conversation that that needs to catalyze further conversation and that we need to have this um, you know, that we need to have this conversation. So I, I think it was also, I, I did uh I did, you know, think about, it was a very dark period in our history and it led to an even darker decade to follow in world history. And um I think we need to be better people than that. And I think it's a complex area, but I think we need to continue that conversation.
Okay, um. So we are, um, thank you Nick, I appreciate that. Um. We are just about on schedule now, so um if, if, if there's anyone else who'd like to say something, why don't we move on to um our first ZBA petition? Which is for I'm gonna make that bigger, my muscles. ZBA number three nine nine one. Uh, this is for twelve Manchester Road, Winchester, Mass, petition is seeking a special permit. Uh, so it's be permitted to construct an addition that will be located closer to side property lines and permitted as by right. And located closer to another building than permitted as of right, property is an RDB and contains twelve thousand eight hundred thirty-four square feet. So um, Yechin, if you would please bring us to I have pages marked out on my copy. I'm good, yeah. So let's, um, so Manchester Road, the property is to the left. Um, and I, yep, it's number twelve, which is, it's a long narrow lot right there, yep. And if we could move on to the next page. And do we have, um, do we have someone from the proponents with us this evening?
Yes, I'm uh available, I'm Scott Grady, the architect for the proposed addition and renovations of the house.
Okay, thank you. Um, so if you could rotate this, Yechin, that would be wonderful.
Not sure how to do that here, hold on.
Uh, I think there's that little semi, if you go right up next to the trash can.
Yeah.
Go to the right.
Oh, yeah.
Try that.
Oh.
Oh, it costs you money?
No, I, I've got, I, I've got the pro version, can we just, okay, it'll take me a while.
Sorry. This is Brian, um, if you go to the right uh and you see like those ta- those colored tabs, there's like a green one halfway down, click on that one. Yep.
Which one?
Uh, the one up, 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 uh, that green one, yep, organized pages.
Organized pages, organize pages, huh.
Downs, down, right there, yep, okay, oh.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I've got pro, here, I've got it, alright.
I can't believe they make you pay to rotate a page.
Oh my gosh, I'm doing this in public, hold on. Hello, where's my?
No pressure, Yechin, no pressure.
There we go. Woo, alright, here we go. Okay.
Okay, this one.
Let's see if I can do it here. Oh. Rotate, hey. Yes.
Oh, well done.
Okay, so if you scroll down to the bottom, we, 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 our, our, oh, our previous town planner would have a nice table showing us all of the things, but if you zoom in, there's some tables down at the bottom that are import. Uh, namely the fact that um those are the existing and required setbacks. And you have, the component is going to essentially maintain one of the side setbacks. I do have a question about one of them, um, but the other one is that the distance to the, from the garage to the house is required to be fifteen feet and they're asking for one that's twelve point eight feet. Um, so the, the question I had is you'll note that on the figure above, there is a stairwell on the left marked in yellow. And the distance from that stairwell to the property line is actually thirteen point one feet. So the question I have is I do believe since that's a permanent part of your house, shouldn't that be included in terms of uh? That's, that's a new, um. Ugh. What is the word I'm looking for?
Nonconformity?
Nonconformity, thank you.
Yeah, that would definitely be new, nonconforming.
Okay, so that's, 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 I think it needs to be amended in your uh, in your proposal.
Well, that, so the reason it, it's less than, I mean, if you went left side and right side, you would list both, but right now, that's greater than the one he did list, which is the nine point three.
But that's on the other side of the house, this is a, this is a new nonconformity.
There's two side setbacks to be discussed.
Right, correct, yep. So um, so I would just point out, this is um, when we, in our discussion tonight, we should focus on those two.
What uh, what's the nine point three that's in yellow, right there, uh on the right, upper right?
That's the existing setback from the house.
This is the existing and then this is the um new one.
Yep.
Where's the new one?
So this is a proposed addition.
Right.
On the left, this is a new, new setback, which is, which isn't changed from the old one.
Okay, so it's, it's basically extending the same line. Is that, is that all it's doing?
It's changing.
Extending the line and it's like an inch different or something?
Exactly.
I'm seeing nine point six to nine point three. In the.
Existing nonconformity is at nine point three and we're maintaining nine point three.
I see. So I, my question is, so this seems like a new, it was an old um mudroom. And it was a setback at ten. Whereas this new mudroom is gonna be at nine three. It's my reading of that. Um, and it's not a, it's not a practical matter, because I don't think it matters in view. But I'm just curious about our board's um our board's position on these things, because it's a, you know, this, this mudroom was probably built so that they didn't have to go through this whole process, so it was conforming, a ten foot setback. But they are now extending it so that this is now um keeping this setback, keeping this nonconforming setback. But I'm wondering, just curious about the process of coming to us, the reason why you didn't put it at ten feet is because you're already, you're gonna ask for this and this as well, so. that, so coming to us for this, the third one is, you know, it's just, it's just part of the whole process anyway. Is that, is that sort of the mindset here?
If I could clarify, actually, that is, while that is an entry from the rear yard, it's an expansion of the existing kitchen. So in other projects I've done in Winchester, if we've had an addition going off the rear of the house, we've been able to maintain that nonconformity without increasing it. That space is not just a little mudroom. It's actually a place you can come in, hang your coat, but it's also an expansion of the kitchen. Is the side rear setback ten or fifteen? In the table it says fifteen. Side is fifteen, so the, the existing mudroom would actually be nonconforming as well. Because that little space that you're seeing is indeed, the existing plan is a little mudroom. But when you see the first floor plan and see what we're proposing, you'll see it's actually an expansion of the kitchen that allows entry from the rear yard into a place to hang your coat, expand the kitchen as well as in the bedroom suite work. Including.
And is, can you just clarify, I guess, the new nonconformity on the left side, it's a stairwell, but it's actually going below grade down to the
Exactly.
Okay.
We have to maintain by code the second means of egress from the basement because there is a second means of egress at this time that is gonna be lost when the addition on the rear is put in place and constructed.
Got it.
Yeah, so historically, Yicheng, I think the board has if, if the setback hasn't, like on the right, we haven't had a problem if there isn't an increase in the nonconformity. So keeping it at nine point three would be consistent with that. I don't know if that was part of your question. In terms of the distance to the garage, that's actually one of the articles that we're probably, hopefully can consider for the fall as to whether we should take away that twelve foot set required distance because it doesn't seem to serve.
Fifteen right now.
Yes, I'm sorry, fifteen, yeah. It doesn't serve a modern purpose in terms of access for fire. And that would be my only concern is that if you wanted that, to make sure that you go, I believe the fifteen foot is for fire access. And if you've got the fire chief to sign off on that saying that this doesn't pose any sort of an issue in terms of access to the structures, that might be a useful thing to add to your packet. The only other one is the, is the three point, the reduction on the other side. And so the question comes, if this is if you only have to do this because of emergency egress because you're removing it, is this the only place you can put it? So that you maybe, can you put it elsewhere without requiring nonconformity?
Well, we can't do it on the right side because we would be substantially increasing the nonconformity. At the rear, we have the stairs and the landing and then we are by introducing a bill call or stairs at the rear, now we're getting closer to the garage. And we're trying not to reduce that dimension or distance between the addition and the existing garage. Our hope was that with the fact that a staircase below grade offers no visual mass to, you know, create a sense of imposing on a setback, that we might be able to get some relief on that.
Do you need to have some sort of a safety rail around there? Because that's a six foot drop, I presume, if you're not paying attention.
That would be correct. A rail would have to go around it correctly.
So there would be some visual indication, but it wouldn't be massive. Yeah, fair enough. Yep.
Is there, Diab, is there a dimensional issue with, you mentioned, you know, the fire department signing off on the fifteen foot or the, the, the less than fifteen foot clearance between the garage and the home, but this would obviously be less than fifteen feet here. So I mean, from like an access perspective, this is also you see the point I'm making, I'm not being very eloquent, but I mean, if, if we're if we're concerned about dropping below fifteen from a fire perspective there, this is the driveway, I believe, on the left side of the house. So
It is.
If that's shrinking down to thirteen one, is that from a dimensional perspective, a concern from a driveway width and access perspective for fire?
I would assume not, but I don't, I don't know that that.
Yicheng, you're muted.
I don't think it's a matter of access curve. I think that it's, it seemed like it was like a historical thing when you know, a car like exploding or something might be too close to the
Oh, to the main stuff.
House, but you know, we have houses where the garage is underneath the house or next to it all the time.
Yeah, that's, that's, I have to say, this is all sort of shrouded in history and mystery and cobwebs, so I'm not sure why it's there, but nobody seems to think that it's a useful addition to the code.
And conversations with the billing department and the fire department, they feel like ten feet is more than enough for access to get around.
So you've had those conversations then, you're ahead of game, but I'm slightly behind you there, or something like that. Any other comments on this or is, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Brian Mantor, town engineer. Do you have any comments on this, please?
Mr. Chair, based on my calculations, there's gonna be a net increase of the previous surface as proposed. We're looking at around five hundred ninety square feet. So that would trigger them to pursue stormwater mitigation. However, Mr. Grady and myself are in discussions in verifying that the logic and the approach to the calculation is makes sense to him and his applicant, just to double check. And if we're in agreeance as to those numbers, then the applicant may come back and revise some of their patio design.
Yeah, for clarification on that issue, it's not the addition itself, the scale or size of the addition that's an issue. It's the amount of patio we'd like to construct for outdoor use. And we have some space available for that, but the size we had proposed does indeed, as Brian said, and depending how it's calculated, increase the impervious surface.
The patio outline is not shown on the right, is it?
It is not, no.
All right, because I, I mean, also it depends on what kind of pavers you use. It can, it can alter the calculation of infiltration.
It's interesting because that's another, that's something I was gonna bring up in my next conversation with Brian when, as we move along, as we assess how that's being calculated. But that's great to hear because that was something I
Previous paver manufacturers have an infiltration number that you can compare pavers using, so maybe helpful.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Scott. Glad to have learned something tonight. Well, yeah, it's always a joy when you learn something new, something that's worth living. So my understanding is then that you are, you're gonna reduce your impervious service rather than putting in some sort of underground mitigation system.
I think that's the route we would like to try.
Yeah, certainly the cheaper route.
Always an issue.
So for the board, any further comments or?
Did we get anything from like design review committee or anything like that?
Oh, no, that's a good point. Design review is meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
You're in, you're in the first of the sequence for all of the ZBA petitions.
We are.
T R C is tomorrow, Historic is next week on Monday, and then ZBA is middle of the month.
Is there a picture of what it's gonna look like? Okay, it's the little, okay.
That's existing.
So here.
Let's see.
Yeah, and Nick, it's all in the rear of the home too.
So what I really appreciate about what Scott has done is, is staying within the view lines from the street. It's a nice deep lot, so that's a natural option to explore and you did a good job with that.
Thank you.
I am worried about cars hitting the proposed stairs to basement, but, oh, I see it's in lawn.
It's all lawn, yeah.
Wait, wait, wait. So where does the driveway go?
So they have a shared driveway with the neighbor, which is our, but yeah, yeah.
I did not understand that. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I didn't either. That's, that's a good point.
So I, I don't have a problem with this in terms of, as long as engineering's happy with the runoff. And it's in, it's not in, well, it actually is increasing a nonconformity from what we said, from, from something to thirteen, three, right?
Fifteen to thirteen, correct.
Fifteen to thirteen, and then there's the additional garage nonconformity, garage distance, but you gotta sign off from fire and that's, that's the important one. So if you, if you, if, would you be willing to make a motion to that effect, Sally?
Oh, sure. Then we can move the meeting along. The motion would be that the planning board recommends favorable action on I'm sorry, this is a special permit or site plan review?
I agree, this is a special permit.
Special permit, right. And our rationale for doing so is we don't believe that the proposed increase in nonconformity is impactful enough to consider it a problem and that in all, things are very closely aligned with the existing nonconformity and that goes, and then with regards to the twelve feet, we have a tendency to be lenient on that because we're looking forward to making some changes and recommending changes to town, town meeting in that regard. So the motion would be to accept, to recommend favorable action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote please. Yicheng. Sally.
Aye.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
I say aye as well. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it. Take care. You too. Good luck at the ZBA. Thanks much. Our next contestant is the ZBA petition. Number three nine nine, I'm gonna guess it's two. Well, that wasn't much of a guess, but it was right. Okay, so we have a petition of Connor and Emily Daly, it's on a property at one eighty-one Mystic Valley. They are looking for a special permit. Whoops, you jumped right before I got, could you go back to that, please? Thank you. They are looking for a special permit. So it has to be permitted to construct an addition that will be located closer to the side property line than permitted as of right. The property is in the RDB zoning district containing five four two zero square feet. A tiny lot. So if you could send us to a page showing us the there's that. And this is an interesting property because it has a front street and a back street. So presumably it has two front yards. And if we could if we could get down to this is the one, this is the my shot. Okay, so we could work it down. Oh, this is, is this the preexisting one?
No, that's showing the, that show, the, the part that's hatched is the existing house. And then right where Yicheng is moving the cursor, that's the proposed addition, that little L shape.
Okay, right, there we go. Yes, it's very tiny on my screen. And the, the, the nonconformity is because it is coming slightly closer than the existing nonconformity, which is seven point two feet on the property versus seven point one, which is the corner of that little
Yeah, I want to quickly point out that the addition is actually set in, there's a, there's a deliberate offset. I think it's a six inch offset. So even though the, the nonconformity is increasing an inch, it's, it's because the property line is not parallel to the side of the house and it's sort of skewing and there you go. That's, that's kind of the right view.
Yep.
It's actually a seven inch offset and
So does the planning board wish to discuss this?
A little curious, Richard, why don't you just do an eight inch offset so then you can get the existing seven point two?
So the, so actually I have no problems doing that. When, because the geometry is so odd, I actually did my own math and thought that the seven inch offset was gonna result in the same seven point two. But then when the surveyor, who's not somebody, I'm, it's not one of our normal surveyors, so I don't, I, I don't have like a great working relationship with him, he's fine. But he did the calculations and it came out at seven point one and I was like, oh, shoot. I, I, so like, if everybody said, gee, change the offset to eight inches instead of seven to, you know, I'm, that's fine with me. It doesn't, it doesn't affect anything. But that, the reason is, is I did the plan first and then the surveyor went back and did all of the surveyor stuff second.
Richard, it looks like it would kind of mess up the new entry in terms of the width of the cubbies or whatever.
No, it would just shrink the closet by an inch.
Okay, right.
In other words, the wall, you see where the word closet is written kind of vertical on the page? The back wall of the closet, we would just pull, we could just pull that forward an inch or two. And, and, you know, to be honest, I mean, this is like discussions we've had, kind of not with one of my projects, but I think, you know, creating new nonconformities versus worsening nonconformity, you know, I think, I think all of this has gotten more confusing over the years, going through the whole application, but in the past, nobody would have really cared about worsening a seven point two to a seven point one. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that makes it right. But I'm just saying like I, I'm having trouble adjusting to what, what, what are the red flags these days? Because the, the, I think are different than they were, you know, two, three, four, or five years ago.
Richard, I have a question. If we asked you to do a seven inch setback, would your client then have to go back to the surveyor and get a new survey and get this new drawing again? Does it increase the cost for them to do that?
It probably, it probably would increase the cost by not a lot of money. I mean, I, I, I don't know. I mean, norm, if it was like Jim Keenan or one of the other surveyors I normally use, they would just charge for you know, a half hour of their time or an hour of their time. It's not like the, it's not like he's doing the whole survey over. He should just be making an adjustment that should take fifteen minutes or a half hour or something to kind of redo it and then reissue it. So it's not, and it's, it's nothing for me. I mean, I, you know, in some, in some point I have to do a a set of permit drawings and so change, changing that from seven inches to eight inches would take me more, way more, way less time. We've already talked about it, more time than it would take me to do it. It's literally changing a number. So it's, it's not, it's, it's not an I mean, I, I'm actually curious to see what, to tell you the truth, I'm really curious to see what the ZBA, I, I didn't do this on purpose, by the way. This is just the way it came out. And because of the, because of the angle and my not, not being sure about the calculations. I'm, but I'm really curious to see what the ZBA, like, because in, in the strictest sense, we are worsening a nonconformity and I don't know, it's, I, I thought creating a new nonconformity. But like, by the way, the project that you just approved, you, I don't wanna like make you go backwards. But from my point of view, you actually allowed them to create a new nonconformity on the left side. They were at seventeen and you just allowed him to go to thirteen. So there was no non, there was no nonconformity on the left side and you just allowed him to create a, a new nonconformity. So from my way of thinking, I know this is like beyond this project, but from my way of thinking, that's like worse to create a new nonconformity to me is way worse than worsening an existing nonconformity by an inch like that. Like that, that's the way I've been thinking about these projects for twenty plus years. So I, I don't, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with them. the, the landscape of the new rules, but anyway.
So, 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 um, Richard, one of the things I'm, I'm a little confused about is, let's say that you did not put in a new, so you're coming before us in part because um, it is a non-conforming lot. And three, five, five, you did not fall under any of the exclusions which would make this by right?
Uh, no, we're, we're proposing an addition that's less than fifteen feet from its side property line.
But it's an existing non-conformity?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, but it doesn't matter. It's, it's, uh, you know.
Okay, I have to review my three, five, five again.
So, so, so ba, so basically anytime you whe, whether, whether an existing structure, so that, so we're, we're all in this, this is in the special permit side of things. Not the variance side of things. I'm, I'm going to stay away from that. This is a pre-existing non-conforming house. But we're adding an addition, actually just like on the, the previous project, on the right side, on the, on the non-driveway side, where they were at nine point three, and a sense, he, um, um, he just extended a pre-existing non-conformity. To some degree, that's what we're doing here. We're, we're extending a pre-existing non-conformity. It just happens by the, by the, by the geometry of it. And I'm just, you know, we have a, we have a, a nice relationship with one another, so I'm just being honest. Like, I, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to worsen the non-conformity by an inch. And if you guys, and if you all as a board don't want to set that pres, precedent for worsening non-conformities, I get that. I would happily, happily change the seven inch offset to eight inches. I don't think there's any problem with that. I think it's more information for the future for other projects, but I, I do want to point out, you just let somebody create a new non-conformity. I think it's a lot worse. That's, that's, I guess, my point, like, I don't get that.
So, so luckily, we didn't actually create it. We just recommended that they get created. So, so we, uh, you know, we, we didn't. That gets us off the hook just a little.
Right, 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 right.
But, um, so one of the things that, in our discussions with town council, which came up, will probably come up again when we talk about three, five, five later this evening, is that town council, if I recall correctly, and this is all based on my memory, is that if you are in non-conformance with a setback, and you further intrude into that setback, you are not creating, you, there's no sense of creating a larger non-conformity. It's sort of a binary thing. You're either non-conforming or you're not. And whether you're two inches from the, from the, from the property line or ten feet from the property line, it's the same in terms of its non-conforming nature. So that's why I'm, I'm, I don't, with that sort of analysis, it seems like, um, you shouldn't have to come before us because you aren't introducing, and there's nothing in here about increasing the non-conform. Well, the language says does not increase the non-conforming nature of said structure. But if you're, if the, if the legal opinion is that simply changing your distance in an already non-conforming setback doesn't increase it, then you shouldn't be before us.
No, I disagree. I, I, every addition, I mean, I wish, by the way, I wish, I wish I did agree with you. Cause it would save me and my clients a lot of work, but anytime any architect, me or any of the other people in town, is proposing an addition that's too close to a setback, we've got to, we have to go for a special permit.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I, 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 I think you're, I think you're lost in, in the three, five, five stuff. I, I disagree with you, Jeff. I mean, I, I, I mean, I wish I didn't have to, I have, I mean, I would be on this meeting anyway with you guys, but I wish, I, I wish I didn't have to be going through this. If I could avoid it, that, you know, believe me, you know, I would, I would. This was, this is not a by right project. I mean, basically, it boils down to, is a project a by right project or a not by right project? If I'm seven point one or two, if I'm anything less than fifteen, it doesn't matter what's there. It's not a by right project, and I have to get some kind of zoning relief. So I, I'm, 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 I don't know why you're seeing it that way. I mean, I, but I.
It's true, DM. Like, we, we've seen cases where people are, um, non-conforming in the front, and then they want to extend their porch, and they come before us, right?
Because I'm, I'm just reading this, this three, five, five language. Non-conforming symbol and duplex residential structures may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or changed, et cetera. Upon determination by the commilling commissioner that such proposed reconstruction, extension, et cetera, does not increase the non-conforming nature of said structure.
And this does by one inch or whatever it is.
And that's where, that's where my recollection of, and again, I may have a completely false recollection. What town council said was that, that, that you, the increasing the amount in which you intrude into a setback, once you've intruded, does not increase your non-conformity.
That does not make sense to me. It does not make sense to me at all. Because what's that saying is that, that, that Richard could have actually proposed something that was a foot off the property line, because when you're in for a dime, you're in for a dollar mentality. And I don't agree.
So by the way, I, I think I, so when, when, when was the town, when was that meeting? About a month ago or six weeks ago, was that?
With council?
Yeah.
Well, it was a while ago, actually.
So, so I actually came away, so now I'm going to reverse, I, I'm sort of with Dab on that. I, I, I'm struggling, you know, so I'll be honest with you. I have another project that I'm trying to figure out when to submit it and how to submit it, where on one of the sides, we're, we're, to ma, we're trying to make a two-car garage work. And we need another four feet, and we're worsening the non-conformity. And I thought at the, at the meeting that the planning board had with town council, whenever that was, about two months or so ago, I thought I heard exactly what Dab just said, which was, once there was a non-conformity, whether you go, whether you, the words I've always used is worsening the non-conformity.
Right.
I, I thought I also heard, heard town council say, like, not dismiss it, but it, I, I came away with that meeting thinking that worsening a non-conformity was not so bad. And that creating a new non-conformity was the worst thing you could do. I, I mean, from my point of view, like, from trying to get zoning relief. So I, I.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that. Worsening a non-conformity is creating a new non-conformity.
That's not, the, well, I don't, I don't see that at all.
Well, the other, other thought that I have is whether the zoning board of appeals takes into consideration that it would be what they might call a de minimis, um, um, increase.
But by the way, they do that, like, they do that in other towns, like Newton, for example, ha, ha, actually has that in their bylaw.
Right.
Uh, you're like, you know, they, they, they have the ability to, it, it's almost like the site plan, the site plan review thing that you all are going over with the less than the five hundred square feet. You know, and that whole thing of site, you know, do we do site plan light or whatever? They, they have, they, they have an, like, an exemption to get out of zoning relief if, if they, they all decide that it's not, um.
It's inconsequential.
Yeah, exactly.
So I, I mean, I really don't understand, Dab, what council was saying about if you're, if you are increasing your, your non-conformity by one inch, you might as well just increase it by seven feet or whatever. I did, that doesn't make sense to me at all, but I do think that in my view, this is a de minimis, um, increase in the non-conformity. And I would certainly recommend that the zoning board of appeals approve that.
So why don't we, um, and I apologize for dragging us into a section three, five, five discussions early. I know you're all chomping at the bit to get it, but, um, why don't we, why don't we, um, come to a decision on this, and then we can dive directly into that, um, but come to a decision on this. Any other comments on this? If not, then I would welcome a motion, which I presume would be to recommend favorable action on petition number three, nine, nine, two.
I would move that.
Is there a, oh, um, Mr. Brian Natcher, Winchester Town.
Oh, hold my mo, hold my motion.
I have no comment on this. Our engineering has no comment.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Motion reinstated.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Uh, Yeching.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Kurt Spring.
Aye.
Nick Roseros.
Aye.
I think that's everyone. And then there's me. Did I miss anyone? I hope not. Okay, I say aye as well. Okay, so that's five, zero. Um, it's probably the most discussion over one inch that we've had in a long time, so.
Well, that's why they call it de minimis.
Yes. Okay, so let us, I think we are done with the petitions. Um, so actually, the next thing on our agenda is the, um, uh, articles. And, uh, I apologize, I sent some, I, I, I sent an email out late this afternoon saying, here are the articles. And then Sally pointed out, I had actually not sent out the articles. So, um, I did send them out shortly before this meeting, so.
Oh, good.
If you have them, could you pop them up? Okay, so, um, we have our standard article one, or whatever they, they assign, number two is our article one, which is essentially, we want to give you a, a report. So I think that's pretty boilerplate. Um, number two, we've, uh, we've voted that we wanted to do this. This would be the language that we would vote in. Um, I think it's pretty straightforward. It is one where we are fixing, we call it a Scruton's error in the table of dimensions where the, um, frontage is a hundred and, is a hundred feet, and the minimum lot width is a hundred and twenty feet. Um, and that was a mistake when they changed all of the frontages and minimum lot widths to be the same. They, they forgot to change this one. So what this does is it brings the minimum watt feet down in the width so that it is the same as the frontage. And it does not introduce any new non-conformities to any existing lots. So it has, as far as I can tell, no real, um.
So, Dab, the thing that happens is when these articles go into the, um, motion book, right, they go in with a backrounder, right?
That is correct.
And so that, everything that you just said would go into that backrounder.
Yes.
This minimum text right here, one sentence, is what would go into the warrant, which gets mailed out to everybody in town, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think it's, everyone gets the, the warrant. They don't get the background.
No, the town, town meeting members get the background document.
Yeah, yeah.
They get the motion book. Um.
So, so we voted, so why don't we just all have a vote? Well, hopefully everyone will agree that article one is a good thing. So can I have someone, uh, vote to put article one on the Springtown warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Again.
Uh, okay, roll call vote, please. Uh, Yeching.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Okay, article two. Um, we have already, um, voted in a previous meeting, we wanted to move forward, so presumably this will be a simple motion to add article two as written to, or, yeah, it might be amended by, uh, town council, but the gist of it is the language in front of us to add this to the Springtown meetings article or warrant.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, thank you. Uh, roll call vote. Let's go in a different direction. Nick Roseros.
Aye.
Kurt Spring.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
I'm sorry, I got really confused. Uh, we're doing article two right now, right? Okay, it's aye, aye. I'm sorry.
Yeching.
Aye.
And Dab's aye as well. Okay, so we're good for two. Article three.
Now, Dab, is this the first time we're seeing this language? Cause I don't believe that I know that I've seen any article three language from our council. Is this it?
This is not the first time we've seen this language. This is the language that was presented to us that last year when, uh, town council came to our meeting and talked about this. This is the language that he thought was the Brian and he worked out the minimum amount of language which would accommodate what we thought was retaining the previous practice.
Right.
And then this was also the language. I sent out a memo about this language.
Yeah, no, I think you did. I just.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
But this is from Mina? Is this from Anderson Krieger?
No, this is from our current council.
Yeah, okay.
Um, Jay, oh.
Tallerman.
Tallerman, thank you. Um, this is from current council, so, um.
Does that increase or does not add?
So the, the, I, I spent, um, about twenty or so minutes discussing this with the zoning board of appeals. They met, was it last week or the week before? It was a week before, um, they met to discuss this. And they did get a, um, some, an opinion piece from, from them. And they have a number of philosophical issues with making things easier to develop in town, which I think are, um, sort of orthogonal to what we're trying to do here. Um, which is.
Does that mean it's orthogonal? I'm sorry, Dab.
It means that I don't know that they are, it's a separate issue in terms of what should we be doing in terms of special per versus variances.
I see.
Which is, and, and they have some, some strong opinions as to how easy it should be to get a special permit versus needing to get a variance. Um, but the directive that we brought, we wanted to, that we discussed over the last several months was to try to change the language so that it was consistent with existing practice. And that if we wanted to address a larger question of whether we want to require variances versus special permits, that that would require much more research and understanding. And that the new interpretation of this part of the bylaw that came about last year from the ZBA was inserting uncertainty. And that we wanted to cure that, at least to make sure that present, uh, recent practice kept, was, was kept.
So that uncertainty, that, that, um, trying to hold on or push uncertainty back is, um, achieved by clarifying in this language, as this language does, that, um, adding a new non-conformity.
So it, it, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just getting in a pretzel of logic.
I think that part of the problem is this is sort of a pretzel of logic, but there's also uh, uh, I know, there's a, um.
It's a double negative, so the first.
It seems like we're not making much of a change. So if the ZBA is strongly against it, then why are we, what's the overarching, what's the overarching? Well, but it's conceptual goal, like, a conceptual goal, an example would be to increase the retail tax base or, or some other overarching goal. And this sort of seems like a, a kind of a small shift in power, if you will, between the community and the homeowner, but the community is the homeowner, so it, 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 it doesn't, I'm not sure why we're pushing on this. If, if we're, then I, I, I don't think that I would support it, but I, I, I'm not sure why we're pushing.
Well, the question is, we have, we have had the, the, the thing is that if you move to a variance-based model, variances are extremely difficult to get. And so if you, in the cases where special permits have previously been allowed, if you now shift those to variances, then those, those projects will never get built because as, as, as Brian Zekelik is drilling into our heads, variance is only available for three very specific um, conditions, which are very rarely met.
So, I mean, it seems like this new language would promote more demolition in town.
Well, this new language talks about reconstruction, extension, or changing. So this, this whole thing is not about, if you want to go into a lot and demo a building. Oh wait, I'm sorry, let me go back and ask why, why, I, I, I don't understand your, your point, so please.
Well, well, I mean, just the fact that we're making things more easy to, you know, I, 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 I think that we're, I guess what I don't understand is why are we making the change? Uh, what, what was the, what was the uncertainty that was introduced and when was it introduced? That's what I don't understand.
So the ZBA came to the conclusion that parts of three point five point five, which provided the ability to get a special permit, were incorrectly applied in the past. And that those projects should have been, had, they should have gone through the variance process. And so they reduced the number of projects which went through, which could go through special permit. So their interpretation was brought to special, Town Council. Town Council took the view that he could interpret this language either as it has traditionally been interpreted or under the new interpretation that the ZBA had. And therefore that the language was ambiguous at best. Or I won't even, that's putting words in his mouth. So we have a problem now where we had a zoning bylaw which had and agreed upon meaning, but it no longer does. So the question is, what do we do? If we leave the language with this new uncertainty, that's not good. If we wanted to maintain previous practice, we could do that by changing the language to bring it into a more certain understanding of what it was supposed to do. And that would remove the, the confusion that was now introduced when the ZBA came to their conclusion that the language didn't say what it, what we thought it said. So we have, we have an ill that we have to cure. So we can either cure it by tearing it all up and coming up with a totally new way of addressing variances versus special permits, which I don't think any of us is willing to take on at the moment. Or we can try to bring the understanding of this language back to what it used to be, so that there's at least an understanding of the status quo as it has been for the last many years. And so this language is supposed to bring us back to that previous status quo.
And, and the previous status quo issue is, is this question that if it adds a new nonconformity, if it's determined that it will not be substantially more detrimental, then the zoning board of appeals can issue a special permit. And you're saying that because, or add a new nonconformity wasn't in the first and the last paragraph before, that, that was deemed a reason to deny the special permit and say that it would only be approved if it qualified as a variance? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so this section three. One, one quick thing. So section three, so there's section three, five, four, which we don't see before us, essentially is a very broad statement saying, you need to get a variance for just about everything. Let's just call it that. Section three, five, five carves out an exception to section three, five, four, saying, for these sets of properties, single and duplex residential structures, you can go through a special permit process. And there's case law. I don't know if you recall, I think I may have written it in the note I passed around, which I sent to the ZBA. This was, when this, when our bylaws were recotified in 2014, it followed the existing case law. Another case came out after this was re, our bylaws were recotified, which narrowed some of the rulings upon which this text was based, which is why there's now some uncertainty in, in interpretation. But the language, what, what the ZBA in part is saying is that some of the language in this, in three, five, four can be interpreted to not, to, to, you essentially have to go back to three, I'm sorry, some of the language in three, five, five is written so that it actually kicks you back up to three, five, four, which is the broader language which requires variances.
Specifically, specifically if you're adding a new conform, new nonconformity.
Right, and, and so.
You know, this is really difficult to understand. I cannot imagine.
Very arcane. I feel like I don't have, go ahead.
Town meeting gonna understand this, I, I.
Yeah.
Well, so, so we can bring Town Council back. I mean, we had a discussion with Town Council. If we want, we can bring Town Council back so that he can talk to us, talk us through this again, so that we understand it.
I think so. I, I just, I don't.
Yeah. So, so part of the problem is that a lot of this discussion took place between Brian and Town Council. And Brian understood nuances a little, a lot more about what was previous practice and what was now being said wasn't previous practice. Let me, let me give you what I think, in, in my understanding, and you can, unfortunately, the ZBA meetings are not, I don't think they're recorded on Zoom. Maybe they are, I don't know. So this is my interpretation of what the ZBA said. The most cogent argument they had against this language was that it was actually more permissive. It would, it would be more permissive than, than previous practice. I'm sorry? Did someone say something? Nope, okay, sorry. And so one of the things that they, they, they were concerned that this would actually allow people to do things that they couldn't originally do. And one of the things that I, I'm a little confused about, because if you scroll down to that last paragraph, Yecheng, please, you'll see that the Board of Appeals has the power to determine that something is substantially more detrimental. And so there is, there is, there are safety measures written into this, which allows for the ZBA to say no. And one of the concerns the ZBA expressed was, well, what do we know what the next ZBA is going to say? And that's, that's a common statement I've heard, but it's like, it's an elected, well, that's an appointed board, but you can't know. And it's impossible to, to write something which can only ever be interpreted in one way. What you have to do is, I mean, that's why, for instance, when you write laws, they say lots of things about a reasonable person. And we all have to somehow agree on a reasonable person. So my, the ZBA is concerned that this language is too loose. I would say that there's language already in here, which gives the ZBA the power to say, no, what you're, you know, you're gonna, you're pushing back five feet. We really think pushing back one foot is what's not detrimental. Pushing back five feet is detrimental, so we're not going to give you a special permit. So I, I, if this board wants, yeah.
What's helpful for me to understand is that we're not changing any of the provisions in paragraphs one, two, and three that are deemed to not increase the nonconformity, right? And we're not changing any of that. All we're changing is that if somebody comes before them with a nonconforming lot and they're increasing the nonconformity, you jump to the bottom paragraph and you say, the zoning board of appeals may allow this if they determine that the modification will not be substantially more detrimental, which is like what we did with the one inch, that what I was calling de minimis. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, it was, it was with the stairwell to the basement, but yes. That's, that's where they would say, yeah, this is not, this is a new nonconformity. I mean, according to their, I believe, according to their reading of this, that that project could not go ahead because it was introducing a new nonconformity with the stairwell to the basement.
The ZBA?
Yes, that, that would be my interpretation.
Right.
So I also noticed that I misspelled conformity, but that's.
Con. Oh, yes. Conformities.
No, that's correct, what do you know?
Non-con, yeah, it looks right.
Can I jump?
We can, confused.
Okay. Sure, Richard, go ahead.
So I, I said, I could talk for an hour, so I'm gonna try to like take one minute or two minutes here, not like. But I think number one, you absolutely should bring back Town Council. I, 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 I've been doing this work for twenty-five years in town. And I'm actually really confused. So I think that, and, and I consider myself to be really good at the zoning. And we, we've been in front of the zoning board of appeals about a hundred times, you know, fo- four to five times a year over twenty-plus years, maybe even more than a hundred times. Three variances and a hundred special permits. And I think going back to like the late nineties, there's been a consistent attitude by the, the ZBA as members left and new members, you know, associate members. And it's been, I think there's been an understood way to interpret the bylaws. And whether that interpretation was correct or not, I'm not legal enough or smart enough to comment on. But the, but the new members of the ZBA have, and I'm just telling you the way I see it.
Right.
I've taken a very strict, extremely legal, philosophical approach to reading the language. And they, and, and I sat in on a bunch of meetings, like for some of our projects and stuff, not, not every single meeting, but they are, I think, trying to reinter, well, in their own view, I think they're just trying to correctly interpret the language. And I think they believe that the language has been incorrectly interpreted up till now. The way I understood Town Council coming to you all was that these few changes were to make it possible to go back to interpreting the language the way it had been over the last, you know, going back to 2014, or from my point of view, going back to the last couple of decades. But I, I have to warn you, and I know this is public hearing, so maybe I gotta be careful how I say this, but the ZBA is, you know, things start to be variances. Variances, you have to prove very unique circumstances in terms of hardship, in terms of lot shape or topography or whatever.
Soil condition is a certain.
Soil condition, which, you know, does not really come up for an addition to somebody's house or whatever. So so it's, it's a huge sea change that is happening. And I think I'm really grateful that the planning board is trying to react to that sea change. You, you all didn't start this. And, and I'm not, and I'm not even saying that the ZBA is wrong in the legal interpretation of the language that they're struggling with or proposing is the, the way it should be, the way that they're choosing to interpret it. But it is a huge change for everybody practicing in town. And I'm, I'm not, this is just the last thing I'll say to you. I'm not kidding what I said a few minutes ago. I have a project that I'm stalling on putting in front of the ZBA and you all, because I don't know what's happening with this. I don't know if I'm applying for a special permit and a var, like there's different pieces to this larger project. And I, I'm finding it like very disturbing that as somebody who's been practicing for two decades, I actually don't know how to interpret the language. I'm scared to death of the ZBA. And I'm just telling you, like, it's very tough going in front of the zoning board right now. It's, it's very confusing. And it, it's not, and I'm grateful that you're trying to figure this out. And I think you should get Town Council back.
Yeah, I think so too.
I agree with Richard on the last statement.
Yeah, we should get Town Council.
We have time between now and March tenth, when the warrant closes.
Well, let me see if he's available for our next meeting.
Which would be on March seventh, right?
Yeah. I said no, and I'd forgotten, is that I, I did try to have, I, I asked the ZBA if they could provide language, which they would, that would do what we would want to do.
Yeah, yeah, Debs, I think that's a very good point.
I, I asked, I asked them for that.
Yeah, I think we should try to get that. I, I.
I, 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 I did get it. And, and it wasn't, it was essentially, all it was, was somehow write something about a de minimis nonconformity. But I don't know how to define that.
So it was nothing, I mean, Debs, I, 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 I just wanna make a point. I, I appreciate that it's our decision. And that's something that you've made a point to, to, to mention, that it's, it's the decision of the planning board. With something like this, that is as kind of arcane as it is, I value the opinions of the type of, you know, the people that are on the ZBA who have more experience than I do and have more expertise than I do. And I, and I, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get to an answer.
There's a philosophical, there's a philosophical divide here between making it easy or making it not easy to make changes to your houses in Winchester, is what I'm seeing. And philosophically, I personally am, especially when we take it down to the granularity of this language, the situations described in this language, I'm not opposed to making things a little bit easier. And I, I am opposed to making things more difficult. So that's where I fall on the philosophical question. And that means that I would vote as a planning board member in favor of putting this article in the warrant. And so that's why I'm really eager to hear our counsel, Jay Tallerman, further explain it, because then I would feel that I was. Right.
Yeah, I think there's, so Nick, I, I, I understand where you're coming from. And I, they, there are some, you know, sharp legal minds on the ZBA right now. The, the thing that I come back to is that we have to listen to Town Council, because it's Town Council is the one who's gonna cover our butts when we get sued.
That's right.
And, and I, I, I am, I don't know how to mediate between what Town Council says is sufficient and what the ZBA has, what they would like in the language. And so because, so I, I tried really hard to explain that we were not looking to make any sea change. And I asked them to give me some sort of language which would allow us to move forward, which they could easily interpret the way that the policy was. And they were not keen to give me that language. They were very keen to tell me why it should be more difficult to get permits that if we didn't go with the, if we didn't make it harder, we would, we would damage the affordable housing stock. I mean, there are some significant philosophical ideas.
I don't understand what you're saying, that something, that if we made it harder to get a, a building permit through the special permit process, that that would, that if we made it easier, it would damage housing stock.
I, 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 I was not able to get a sufficient explanation from them. One person spoke and said that, and I wasn't able to understand it at that time either. But what I'm trying to say is there seems to be a trying to, trying to say, here's the policy. trying to, trying to say, here's the policy we wish to pursue. Please help us get to language which you understand expresses that policy, is something which I was not able to get to, and maybe I'm just not capable of, of speaking with their, in their language. And, but the key is that when, when push comes to shove, it's the town council who's the one who has the final say as to whether the language is legal and does what it's supposed to do, in a sense, because they're the ones who are gonna, if, if the town gets sued, it's town council who's going to come up with the arguments. So I don't know how to mediate between these two batches of lawyers, but I, I know who the town pays to do the, the legal opinion.
Isn't it, I mean, I, I'm sorry to butt in again. My, my view of what a lot of, like myself or other architects are doing, by doing additions and renovations to older homes, is every time we do that, I think we make it harder for a builder to come in and tear down that house. Somebody, if somebody invests in their old home and fixes it up and spends a hundred or two hundred or three hundred or five hundred thousand dollars, and yes, they change the house. But if they fundamentally keep the original house and they add to the back, or they add to the side, or they do whatever, I've always thought that that was like a really good thing for the town as opposed to making it harder for a homeowner to improve their home and therefore making it easier for somebody to say, I give up, I'm gonna sell my house to the highest bidder, selling it to a builder developer who tears it down and puts up another oversized house. And so I don't understand where the zoning board of appeals is coming from, but I will tell you that they are not strictly interpreting language, that they are applying their own philosophical attitudes about the town of Winchester, and I really think that that's wrong. I, 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 I think their job is to interpret language and apply it and to look at precedent for what's been happening and if they need to question language, but they, they are, you, you all need to know, they are applying a certain philosophical set of attitudes, an anti-progress, anti-homeowner renovation attitude. And, and this is gonna come back and bite me for saying this out loud, but I think you all need to be aware how difficult that they're making it for people to add and renovate their homes, and I think it's really frustrating for homeowners, and it's really frustrating for professionals. And I don't think it's what you all intend, and I don't know if anybody like in the select board gets what's happening at the ZBA. Like, I, I don't think this is what the ZBA was charged with, was making it really hard all of a sudden for people to do additions and renovations to their home. That's what they're doing, and I don't know why, and I don't know why that, they're the ones doing this right now at this moment in time. And I think it's legit for them to, to look at the language and question the language. But I'm putting you all on alert that this is not just about language, this is a whole approach thing. They're just making it extremely difficult, and if that's what everybody wants, and that's what town meeting wants, and the planning board wants, and the select board wants, and if everybody agrees to make it hard to homeowners, but that's not the way it's been for the last twenty-five years, so I don't know where this is coming from. And it seems like it's really in the bad interests of the town. It's, it's gonna make it harder to do the, the accessory dwelling units. It's gonna make it hard for all the stuff that I think we all like about the old houses in town. So I'm really frustrated, and I'm trying to communicate that to you.
Thank you. I, I think you have very effectively communicated that.
Yes, I thank you too, Richard.
I, I do wish that the ZBA meetings were taped so that people could more easily go and see them. I know that it, it was very instructive for me to understand how they worked. And again, I'm relaying to you my impressions of what was said there, so you know, I am, I am not a perfect reporter. But I, I do, I, I just realized it's, it's now twelve of nine.
Can I make a summary statement here, Dea?
Yeah, just let me, you go ahead and do that, and I'm gonna figure out where we are in our agenda.
Well, where we are in our agenda is we need to talk about four point one point one and RDA lot with, no, we were talking about lot with. And then if you wanted to talk about future town meeting warrant articles, and then we have to talk about Brian's, the search.
Okay, okay, so go ahead, go ahead, Sally.
So the summary on this one that I'm hearing is that we should have town council come to our March seventh meeting. Okay, to further clarify for the board the points of discussion tonight, okay? And that we will vote at the March seventh meeting whether to put this language on the warrant for spring town meeting, the deadline for which is March tenth, three days after our next board meeting.
Yeah. The other, that, I think that I will send Jay an email tomorrow and ask him to do that. The other thing we need to know is and I'm clear about this, is whether we need a two-thirds or a simple majority for this.
That would be something that Brian would know.
Yes.
Jay will know also.
Yes, Jay will know also, two-thirds versus simple majority. So let's.
And then we, and then if we do decide to put this in, in the warrant, then we're gonna have to take some time to craft the background statement.
I think that would, that's very true. It's, it's confusing because it's easy to get confused. No, that's not.
That's a logic with double negatives.
Yeah, and I think what, what would be really helpful is if we could actually come up with scenarios which would were previously allowed but would no longer be allowed under the, the new interpretation which we want to recover. And I think that's part of the problem, is this is all very theoretical. And if we don't have an actual project in front of us, it's hard to understand what ramifications are.
No, I'm a big advocate of case studies to understand this discussion of law.
So let's, let.
That's a huge research project.
Yeah, okay, so thank you for that summary, Sally. I think we need to why don't we dive into possible bylaws or change for, for the fall, just something to, to whet our appetite. So the fifteen feet between buildings, we've had somewhat of a discussion about that. I don't think that, I think that that is something that is a pretty easy lift. I think we just need to contact the fire chief and find out what their position is on it. I don't know how we, I don't know how we do the research as to why it was in there.
Well, the other thing, and this is something that Yi Ching and I have been doing, is look at what other towns nearby us and towns that we consider to be peer communities say on this matter of how much space must be between buildings on a lot. So so that's what work that we would do between now going along to, going along our, our schedule of timeline to town meeting for fall town meeting, so, which of course is always already upon us practically. So that's, it's the thing about that.
The other one is something that, so you may, you may recall a couple of years back, we tried to change the definition of half-story to what I think the planning board wanted to make it easier to interpret, but I think it got lost in the weeds at town meeting. And one of the, one of the other ways of, of handling this is to simply say that we lower the height of residential buildings by X amount. Single-family structures can be no taller than, I think we're at forty feet right now, take it down to thirty-five. Anecdotally, it seems that at least some of the, the more prolific builders in town have already started moving to that, just in terms of, there has been somewhat of a shift in the market, and actually Yi Ching, you know this much better than I would, in terms of larger new houses. People apparently are beginning to realize they don't need such a tall structure. But that is something to consider, is that one way of dealing with massing is to simply say you can't have it more than thirty-five.
Um, Dea, can we pull up on the screen the table of dimensions in our zoning bylaw? I could try to do that if, if you want me to. I just really wanna see where the change appears.
Yi Ching is, is the master of ceremonies here, so. Thank you, Yi Ching. Appreciate it.
Does anybody know what section it's in?
It's section four. It's, there's a table. It's, it's that table right there. It should be, if you click on it, you should be seeing max building height in stories, max building height in feet.
Forty-five.
That's the name, RB. I don't even know what the RB is.
The RB, RB is is twenty thousand square foot lots. That would be the west side of town.
Okay.
And RDA is also twenty thousand.
Oh, that's because it's usually RDB, not RD, not RB. Okay, right.
But RB and RDA are both twenty thousand square foot lots. I don't understand. Which I tried to have it handed, but I don't.
So those, those, so that's the table.
But so, so right now, minimum height, it's just this one forty-five. And over there in GBD three and two, it's also forty-five, and in IL, that's a different story altogether.
Yeah, the commercial zones, and those, those have taller structures.
So the, the, the bylaw for the fall would be to change it from forty-five to forty, where it appears now, and it appears.
To change it from forty to thirty-five.
Oh, across the board.
Well, that would be, one, one could ask if that is appropriate.
Wait, do, do we, no, why do we wanna restrict the building height, uh, and make it smaller?
Yeah, they're huge right now. Like, some of, some of the new constructions are really, really big. And I think in some of our.
Well, they, they are huge.
In some of our peer, peer communities, they're about thirty-five. And we can, we can do a research on that, but I think that's what Brian was saying before he locked.
But I mean, it, it seems like we're imposing something that's gonna impact the design of the buildings. It, it seems like, I mean, we're making it more restrictive.
So like.
I, 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 I hate these huge towers.
Floor-to-floor height typically is about ten feet, so when you're making floor-to-floor heights of twelve, thirteen, fourteen, it gets really tall, and that's historically hasn't been, you know, how these steel found had been built.
Right.
So.
I guess, I guess that is kinda high.
We're sort of restricting the, the huge massive builds.
Also, it, you know, from a sustainability point of view, in terms of building materials and in terms of heating and air conditioning costs, lower ceilings are more sustainable, lower, how, lower-height houses are more sustainable.
Just less energy use, yeah.
Right, and I mean, you could say, well, just force me to make a giant footprint house. Nonetheless, heating, heating its fourteen-foot ceiling or twelve-foot ceiling is different from eating, heating a ten or eleven-foot ceiling. Richard, I.
I can tell you that in, in many of the towns, it's thirty-five feet, not forty, but I can also tell you that every town, as you all know, has its own zoning. And so sometimes the height will, will be defined as to the peak of the roof, sometimes it will be defined to the midpoint of the roof. And then how you establish average grade, in some towns, you can actually manipulate the grade. Sometimes it's the average proposed grade. In some towns, it's, it's the average existing grade, and they won't allow you to, you know, so you have to be you have to be careful when you compare to other towns. It's not just the number, it's what's the number measured against, but generally.
The definition, the definition.
Definition of building height, but generally speaking, forty feet is high. It, it is thirty-five feet in most of the other towns. And, and then by the way, I'll just mention also quickly about the garage one, just going backwards. My, you know, Winchester is the only town that I've ever seen that has ever had a zoning rule about a minimum separation between a house and, and an accessory structure, like a garage. No other, to my knowledge, no, to my knowledge, no other, well, met, uh, does it?
Yeah, I, I did a recent one, yes, I think it had like a ten or fifteen.
So that may be the only one, but I, you know.
So, so, so for the fall, I mean, we're trying to make a work plan here. If we wanna bring this to town meeting in the fall, the research is to understand the intersection in each of our peer communities of building height definition and building height limit. And so we would have to be clear about our objectives, and I think from my point of view, the objectives are to make, to, to discourage construction of houses that feel disproportionate to the last hundred years of house building, or several hundred years of house building in, in the town. And also there's the sustainability issues. And I'm encouraged to hear that, from Dea, that there's a movement in the real estate market towards houses that are not pumped up.
I, I, it's anecdotal. That's all.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's true, but.
That's, that's just what my particular little bird told me.
So, so if we wanna bring this to town meeting in the fall, we would have to identify the intersection of building height definitions and building height limits in peer communities to come up with our rationale, our background or statement for why we're doing this.
Yeah, and I, I think Nick brings up a good point, is that we need to look at what impact that will have. And so if we can show that you are quite, if, if it's, if, if we can show that it's possible to build, you know, a stately house with, which doesn't, you know, go to forty feet, then I think that that, you know, sets that concern alleviates that concern to some extent. And I, I, I think one of the interesting things might be to look at some of the historic homes that are big and see how old they are.
That would, that would be interesting.
Yeah. So let's.
Richard, do you have some of that information? You've done some work on some historic homes in town. You're, I think you're muted, yeah.
Right, I mean, we're doing an addition to the House ninety-four Church Street that's at the corner of Church and Sheffield, you know, which is an historic house. If you give me like one minute, I'll tell you what the height is. Give me, give me one second.
One, one, one piece of datum. So while Richard's off doing that, we need to, we need to, there are a couple of other ones. We've got the ADU bylaw. We, we discussed, I believe, that we have a disparity. There's this donut hole, as it were, between, uh, when you turn sixty and sixty-two. I think one of the other.
One more I wanted to mention, if, after we go through these three.
Yeah, I had one more as well. I mean, I don't think we have time to go into any more detail, because we do have to move on to town planner search and selection.
We do.
Yeah.
Can I mention what the other one is, and we can put it in the parking lot?
Sure, mention it.
You mentioned it to me. It's actually the waiver bylaw, four point five, where you can request a wa- waiver if you are trying to preserve a historic or natural resource. And the question that you raised that I made note of was who determines that it is a historic or natural resource? And we think that we know the answer to that with MACRIS for historic. For natural, I don't know if we know the answer, and most would ask conservation, but that is what is missing.
Yes, and I have reached out to chairs of historic and CONCOM. I, you know, the background for this is when I was at the ZBA meeting, the first hearing for the two, four or five waiver projects were in front of the ZBA, so I got to listen to them try to figure out how to implement this, since these are the first two that came before us. And it seems there are some gray areas that need to be straightened out. Like, who actually is, who holds? I mean, it's something that, that Chair of the Historical Commission passed on to me, like, who isn't who holds the conservation easement? Does it go to the town? Who writes it?
The conservation easement travels with the deed.
Right, but there's, there's something else that goes on with that. There's, there's a couple of good questions he asked, and I think the thing is that now that the rubber's hitting the road, we're, I think that there are some gray areas we need to clarify.
So that would be also for fall town meeting.
Yeah, and CONCOM is a jurisdiction issue, so there's also that, is. Yeah, and Concom is a jurisdiction issue. So there's also that is, is do they, anyway, so is Richard, Richard, are you back?
You're mute.
Yeah, so, um, so I think you all know the, the house I'm talking about. It's the beautiful house. It's the, um.
Can we do a street view?
It's the Stillman.
We don't have time for street view. We don't have time for street view.
It's the Stillman Snow House. It's the historic house. It's the, it's at the corner of Sheffield and Church. And so it's, it, it has nine and a half foot ceilings at the first floor, eight and a half foot ceilings at the second floor. It has a complete third floor. And then an attic above the third floor and kind of measured from the ground at the front, it's a little over forty feet. It's forty-one or forty-two feet tall. Measured, if you measure it from the Sheffield side where the ground drops off for a garage, it's probably fifty feet tall, you know.
Is that the big house with the two car under or something, right?
Yeah, maybe you don't want to use that as our, as our poster.
But I, but I do, I do think if you went through the flats and you looked at houses on Oxford and Wedgmere, those houses probably would be forty feet plus to their peaks because those houses tend to have full third floors. Yep, it's that house. So.
That's what I was thinking of, yeah.
And that's not even the turret. I'm measuring just from the ground, like it's a front of the stone porch to the peak of the roof. It's something like forty-one, forty-two feet. If you considered it from the ground at the driveway, you know, which is kind of a weird view, then it would be even taller. And the, and the turret is taller. Like, so if you, you couldn't, so in other words, you couldn't do this house today, but.
Well, one thing I want to correct you on, when you said a couple of times, full third floor, I believe that this would qualify as a half-story by our standards, no?
No, that, well, um.
By our terminology.
By our, in terms of the dorm, you know, in terms of dorm is only being half, less than half the gutter line or whatever, yeah, I guess it would, but when you.
Yeah, that's, that's two and a half. Yeah.
When you're up, I'm just telling you, when you're, I, I mean, maybe this is helping.
With architecture.
But when you, when you're in the third floor, it is, you know, the item, I don't know what the square footage is. There's probably fifteen hundred square feet of space up there. It's a, it's a big house.
It's big, it's big.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think this is why, you know, again, this is when we're looking at height, we also, when we're looking at using height in order to, to, to try to get a handle on massing, the size of the lot is important.
Well, yes, this question comes up on North Main Street all the time, that we're talking about height in stories and height in feet. And this question, we need to really get a grip on.
I mean, some smaller lots might, might benefit from a, a taller structure. I mean, a lot of the houses are sprawling and they take up the entire yard. I mean, they're, they're all too big, of course.
We build to the setback and build forty-five feet high.
I don't know, but I'm, I'm saying that, that it may not be, it may have some unintended consequences just to make a height, um, as a way to get the houses smaller, although I would love a way to get the houses smaller. So, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is.
So let's think about that on, put that on hold and let's shift directly into our next topic.
Okay, good. And Yecheng, I love the tour.
It's nine oh seven. So, um, when last we met, we discussed, um, how we would handle the, the three sections. And, and I think we do have the memo in four of, before us, thank you, somewhere in there, Yecheng, if you could go to the end. Um, so here we go. So we have three, three parts of the selection of this whole process. One is, um, the initial creation of a shortlist, public interviews, and then, um, the final, um, selection. So I, I, you all on the planning board and now the rest of humanity will learn. The planning board got, um, a copy of my discussions with town council about how we move forward and we maintain the privacy of those who have submitted resumes to us in the most likely thought that they would actually be private and not blasted out to all of the internet. So the way forward on that is for the planning board to create a selection committee, which we can do because we have not yet distributed the, um, resumes. Um, so we would create a selection committee or a search committee, I'm sorry, not a selection committee, a search committee. Um, the search committee cannot have more than two members of the planning board because it cannot be a quorum of the planning board. Otherwise, that would essentially be the planning board controlling the search committee, which is not the point. So the search committee could do the initial shortlisting in executive session. Um, they would, then we could reach out to those who, um, were, 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 were made the shortlist and see if they wish to continue with the interview process. If they decline, then we would say, okay, thank you. And their names would not go public because we don't want to jeopardize their current employment. And then we would have.
Do we get to look at them? I mean, do, uh, are we still on a, on a?
If we are not, if we want to, if, yeah, we still are, if we wish to go forward with this process, then the only people who get to see all of the applications are those who are on the search committee.
DAB, I thought in our last conversation that, that the search committee would be two members of the planning board plus, um, a representative from Historic, from Design Review, and help me out, there was one more, no?
Housing Partnership.
Housing Partnership, thank you.
This was just you and I, Sally, tossing ideas around, so.
But that's what it says. Um, no, it doesn't say. But so that's what, when we were talking about that, I thought that's where we were headed.
Well, it's, 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 it's an option for the planning board to consider because it's the planning board which has to vote to set up the search committee. So I think at this point, um, it's, it's really up to the, to the rest of the board to, to have a discussion.
That, I mean, uh, I, I think that would, that would, uh, it would be nice to have the Historic and DRC as part of it.
And Housing Partnership, too.
Right.
So, so, so DAB, this memo dated February sixteenth, which went, I, I can't see the top of it, but it went to somebody. It went.
No, it went to the planning board. It also went to, I sent it to the planning board. I sent it to HR. HR passed it on to the town manager, who passed it on to town council, who bounced back. And, um, I had a conversation with town council, which you all got to see the last bit of it, where he essentially said what I just told you this evening, that if we wish to keep these resumes confidential, we need to go through the search committee process. And it's essentially laid out as I just put it there.
I mean.
No, actually, this doesn't describe.
No, it doesn't. This, this.
Right, right, yeah, okay.
This is, this is, this is prior.
Right.
This was for discussion last Tuesday, which we never got to.
So, I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kurt.
I just had a question. I mean, if we, what if the board just agreed to not, a non-disclosure protocol or sign an NDA or some equivalent?
It doesn't work like that because of open meeting law.
Oh.
We are, we, we are a public board, which, so these are the rules we must follow.
I, I also had asked the question about the use of executive session. And, um, that if the planning board had called an executive session to do the initial identification of, say, the top four candidates, that we would then turn over to the screening committee. Is that not an appropriate?
No, that's, that's exactly what I suggested at first and then town council said it was inappropriate. So you'll see where it says creation of a shortlist, planning board will meet an executive session. And he said, nope, you can't do that. When it gets to the actual decision, when the planning board meets in quorum, to make this decision, it must be done in public.
I'm just thinking back to the town manager hiring and that decision was made in public. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
The selection committee was the only body which had access to all of the applications. They provided a shortlist, which was then given to the select board. When it was given to the select board, it became, all of those people became immediately public. Those who, who wished to continue. There were candidates who, even though they went onto the shortlist, decided they did not wish to continue with the process. And so they were never revealed to the select board.
Right, right. And, and, and they might have had the reason that they didn't want their boss to know.
Possibly, who knows? Yeah, but.
Exactly, okay.
But we are, we are very limited in the paths forward. And that's just, those are the rules we have to work by.
So is a motion in order to move that, um, the planning board will, um, release to, will create a, a search committee and release the body of a dozen or however many they are, I don't actually know how many there are, resumes to this search committee and, 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 and make a motion as to what the composition of that search committee would be?
Sure. I haven't, I would love to hear from Sally and Kurt, what, how they, how they, how they want to.
You don't mean Sally. You just heard from Sally.
I'm sorry, Yecheng. You're the only one I see right now, so.
I, I'm, I'm okay going with a search committee, um, and keeping the, it confidential for some of the candidates, for all of the candidates.
Yeah, I mean, is, is there, is there an alternative or is that the only?
Well, the only alternative is it all goes public right away. So it's not much of an alternative.
When you say it all goes public, do you mean that we put the resumes up on screen at, at one of our meetings?
Yes.
So we don't get to look at them in, without putting them up on screen?
That's correct. They will become the resumes because they will be part of our public discussion, will become public documents. There is, there is, there is not a lot that we can legally keep as privileged information. We have even fewer things than, it's really unfortunate because I believe today was actually one of the open meeting law sessions that Town Hall was, was putting together. But we have very limited, um, capabilities of putting things into, as executive session documents. Much more limited than, say, the select board, which is itself pretty limited. So, um, if we want them to be, if we want to keep these confidential to protect the, the interests of those applying, then we really have only one option.
You're on mute.
To create the search committee, including two members of the planning board and others, to bring it to an odd number as we would vote.
I'm sorry, your first, the first, you, you were laying out a motion, Sally, because.
No, no, but what you were saying was we have no choice. And I'm saying no choice but to do anything other than create a search committee, which is a screening committee essentially, that would consist of some odd numbered body that we would recommend and approve and vote and make it so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this, this would be a pretty light lift for the committee that we, we, we don't have more than, we have a little more than a handful of applicants. So.
So is, so would I move then that the planning board would vote to create a search committee, otherwise known as a screening committee, um, that would consist of two members of the planning board, one member of the historical commission, one member of the housing partnership board, and one member of the design review committee to review the currently received applications and any more that come in before the posting ends or whatever. But to try to come up with a shortlist that they would then recommend come in for interviews that would then proceed according to the description in the February sixteenth memo. Is that the correct motion?
I would amend that motion slightly, which is to say that we would request the chairs of those boards rather than a member of those boards.
Okay, I'm, I'm cool with that. I see that. So it would be to chairs. And, and then, then once they get to their, 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 say they've got seven resumes and they get it down to three people. At that point, those three people get invited, get asked if, if, if they can come and participate in public interviews. At which point they're making a decision that we're not keeping it secret from their current employer anymore.
That's correct. And it's only at that point, when, when we have the final set of people who have agreed to continue with the process, that those resumes are released to the entire planning board.
Right. And then the final selection, oh, so then there's these two rounds of interviews and that doesn't have to be part of this motion, or maybe it does, I don't know. But then, um, the selection is that the entire planning board will meet an open session to consider and make their decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would, I would like it if we voted on this process as ones.
Okay, so we, then we should really deep dive into the two sets of public interviews. One would be town hall staff and one would be interviews before the boards. And the interviewers will be the planning board, the, the town manager, representative from the three boards and the select board. The three boards that we just mentioned before in the screening committee and the select board, ten interviewers in total. And the town hall interviews would be engineering, building, town manager's office and town clerk.
And I, I mistakenly forgot to put in the sustainability director.
In the first paragraph?
No, in the town hall, in the town hall.
Yeah, the town hall staff interviews and sustainability director.
Because they're sharing an office. It's, it seems rude not to, uh, not to mention that there is, there's a great overlap, but yeah.
There is a great overlap. And, and that, that one overlap in particular recommends it above other boards and entities that, that the person might overlap with. And yes, and then for the interviewer questions, that they be submitted to the planning board so that they can be consolidated. So my motion would be that we would, take this February sixteenth memo, we would change the first paragraph to say that the planning board will appoint a selection, no, a, a screening committee.
Call it a search committee because that's what town council calls it.
Okay, it's, it's a search committee and they will limit, they will, they will come up with a shortlist. And we've already said who that short, that search committee would consist of. And then once that shortlist is presented to, um, the chair or somebody decides that we're going to call these three people and, or four people, whatever, and say.
I, I would suggest that the, the, one of the two members of the planning board who are on the search committee would be the ones to make that call.
Okay, good. Okay, so that would go into the motion too, that a, a planning board member of the search committee would then reach out to the candidates to get their permission to, um, or to get their buy-in to participating in a public interview process. And then those interviews will be conducted as described in the public interviews section with the addition of sustainability director in the town hall staff interviews. And everything else remains the same and including the selection. And that's the motion?
That would be the motion. And then we have to eventually, so I, what I would suggest is we vote on this. But we still have to vote on who gets to be from the planning board on the search committee.
Can we, uh, can we nominate people? Like, like, for example, could I nominate Sally right now?
Well, let's, let's, um, yeah, let's vote this in to get this off our list of things we need to vote on. And then we can get to who gets nominated. Okay, just so that we, so we have a motion, and I'm sorry, I, I introduced that and I shouldn't have, I'm confusing things. So we have a motion. Is there a second for that motion?
A second in.
Okay, so let us, um, we'll call that. Uh, Nick?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yecheng?
Aye.
DAB's is aye as well. Okay, so, um, I will review this film or this video, we don't do film these days, to make sure I get the language right. I will write this up, get it to Jay, have Jay sign off that this meets whatever legal requirements there are. Based on my understanding of our conversation or email conversation, it will. And then I will, as soon as Jay says go or says okay, I will reach out to the chairs of the three boards mentioned, DRC, HC and HBB. And then I will, as soon as Jay says go, or says okay, I will reach out to the chairs of the three boards mentioned, DRC, HC, and HBV, and we'll move forward.
Those three people would convene with two people from this group?
Yes, so now we get to, who gets to be on the, on this search committee from this group? So we have two people. And why don't we, we have nominations, you can nominate yourself. We have one nomination already for Sally.
I nominate Deb.
Okay, there's a nomination for me. Any other nominations? I nominate Yi Ching. Okay, uh, Kurt and Nick, you wanna step forward? You wanna step backwards?
Volunteer.
Is stepping backwards an option?
It's, it's as fast as you can.
No, I, 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 I'm comfortable with all the nominations so far. I think they're all, they're all great.
Okay.
I, I guess I could put my name forward, but I, I'd be comfortable with the other, you know. Anyway, a, a diversity of, of, of viewpoints would be, be good.
Yes, um, so is there anyone nominated who doesn't wish to be on this committee? Okay, so we have three people on the committee. I mean, the candidates to choose from. Oh my God, okay, so why don't we, um, we have, we have a embarrassment of riches here, so how do we wanna do this? Do we wanna just vote? I don't know, how do we do this? Does someone have a good idea how to do this? We've never had to do this before.
I can step back.
Well, that would make it easy, but is that, is that something you really, are you doing that? Well, I don't have to ask you while you're doing that.
No, out of, out of time, really.
Okay. Well, thank you, Yi Ching. Um, are we then happy with Sally and I being on this?
I, I certainly am.
Okay, so why don't we do a, just because I don't know what this, this is new stuff, let's just do a vote. So the, the appointment is for Sally and I to be the representatives of the Planning Board on the search committee. Is there a motion to that effect? And I guess we have a motion in a second, so let's do a roll call vote. Uh, let's see, Yi Ching?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Kurt? Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
And I'll say aye as well, so we are set. I will move this out the door. Today was, I believe, was, it's either today or yesterday was the last day. So.
Of the posting?
Of the posting. I don't recall exactly what the day is.
And the search committee would have the option of saying, we have zero viable candidates, repost the job. That could happen.
I think the search committee should it's possible, but I, 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 I.
Well, let us hope that doesn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, let's hope we don't go there.
Because we gotta get somebody.
Yeah. Um, and I think that we should, we should, you know.
So Deah, how long will it take for you to get, um, Jay to say, this is good, carry on?
I, I don't know. I, I will, I will put this together and send this out tomorrow. Probably not first thing, but as soon as possible. The other thing, so we are, we, we actually have nothing left on our agenda.
I could just say one thing, um, that is just for Yi Ching, that you and I are working on this mass builds thing, and I'd love to connect, um, tomorrow, if your calendar permits, so we'll work that out.
Yes, and one thing before we go is, um, this should have been in the updates, but I forgot. Um, so the, the, um, posting for the volunteer position on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, or MPIC, it's closed. Um, we do have one person who submitted, um, a, an application, and I'm hoping that we can bring them to our Planning Board meeting next week to, to talk them, to talk with them, and I believe that they are a really good candidate, so.
Did you almost hate to talk them into doing it?
No. They, they, they came forward.
Oh, excellent.
And it's a long time, uh, community member who is, um, so I think it's, 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 it's great. They've already been at, they've already attended Master Plan Implementation Committee meetings, so above and beyond the call. Um, so I think that what we're going to do is we're going to, um.
Deah, before we adjourn, can I just go over some quick dates with the whole group?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Oh yeah, we're supposed to put action items at the end of our agenda. I think I forgot to do that this time. Oh, okay.
So here's the meetings, because I got really confused about what's coming up. North Main Street meeting, um, we're meeting with Form and Place at, on the second at 10:30, and that's just to, you and me, just to get them pointed in the right direction, because there's going to be, um.
Next, next Tuesday, they will be coming before us to show us their fits for the upper section.
So next Tuesday, March 7th, right, and, and then 3-7 with the PB, okay, that's that one. And then, um, the, um, Holton Swanton Cross, we have a, a meeting on whatever the 13th is, which it looks like, um, I'm just so confused.
That's a similar, that's a meeting with Josh Biola of Biola?
Yeah.
Of MAPC, and that's simply to, he's gonna give us a, it's just Sally and I, and it's just a dry run of his presentation to the Planning Board, which is coming up very soon.
Yeah, I don't think it's the 13th. I think I wrote that down wrong.
Let me, let me double check, um, but it's, it's, um, it should be in the Planning Board Group Calendar. So you should all hopefully have access to that if you go through the Outlook site.
Planning Board Calendar.
Yeah. So there's, there should be.
13th of March. At, oh, the 13th of March at 10:00 AM, yes, right, okay, good. And that's a preview of what they're going to do at, um, a community-wide meeting on May, excuse me, April 4th, Planning Board meeting, is that right?
That is correct. We're gonna have a public, oh, we have to do promotion for that. Well, that's a public meeting, that's a big, that's, we want us.
We have to back up from the May 20, what did I just say? I said May, Holton Swanton Cross Community Meeting, April 4th, so we gotta talk about this in the upcoming Planning Board meetings.
Yeah, so we're, we are going to, um, need to do some PR for that, because that's another one of those community conversations, I believe.
It's a listening session, you called it. So we have to talk about PR for the April 4th Community Meeting about Holton Swanton and Cross, right? Okay, so that's an agenda item, and then, um, the ADU Working Group, there's a meeting on the 10th at 10:00 AM. And we talked about this a little bit, and there's also an event that the Housing Partnership Board is planning for one of two dates in May. Right? And then the Tree Working Group is having a meeting on the second at 5:00 PM. And that's to continue their discussion, I don't know if the Planning Board knows this, about revitalizing the existing Winchester Permanent Street Tree Committee.
And it turns out the Planning Board actually has a voting seat on that committee, which I didn't know, so.
So that's happening at the, at the Tree Working Group meeting at 5:00 PM on the second.
And there's an extra MAPC meeting that, that's, if you go back to, to the end of March, Yi Ching, there's an extra MAPC meeting on, oh wait, on May 7th, is that, yeah, March the 2nd. I don't understand why.
Wait, March, this is, this will be for Holton Swanton Cross?
Well, that means we have a meeting tomorrow with MAPC.
The meeting with, with, with Josh is on the 13th at 10:00 AM.
And why does it say MAPC Josh at March 1st?
Let me see. Well, that would be something, that would be something to call him about.
Yeah.
Are you gonna do that?
I will do that. I thought it was later. I thought that was later, okay.
I didn't have that in my notes anywhere.
I didn't either. I thought it was later. Okay, well, welcome to the Organized Planning Board.
Okay, so you guys all tracked all that, and the test will be tomorrow morning.
Okay, so, uh, I will call Josh. I will send Josh email tonight, and hopefully he's up late, and we can talk about it and see whether that was when we were supposed to meet or not. Email Josh. Okay, um.
Wow, everybody.
Wow, thank you, Sally.
I'm happy to make a motion to adjourn, but before I do that, I, I'd love to, um, address what, uh, Deah said earlier, and I just had, I had to think a little bit, um, about it, but, um, I really thank the Chair for making, um, to, to reference, um, the meeting, um, last week and, and to make it a safer, uh, safe space for me. I think, I think, you know, I, I recognize that I have a very different life experience and life, perspective than many, um, and I, I, you know, really thank those with seeing that from an empathetic perspective, and, um, you know, I think, um, you know, living in a very racialized, you know, country, um, that, that perspective translates to, um, a lot of viewpoints, um, that I have about things, and I, I know that there's a very significant difference between intent versus impact, and I, I really appreciate you guys hearing that from this perspective, but I was also wanting to, you know, take a guess at perhaps, um, I, I was, I think it's an imperfect, um, perspective, and I, I'm sure that I'm making mistakes also on, how to express that, but I, I appreciate the space and the safety to, to work that out, and thank you for working that out too, um, together, so.
Yeah, I, I support that. I, I think that, that it, well, I mean, I was, I was taught to, to be inclusive and kind, and I hope that we, on the board, make you feel that way. And I hope that the things that you bring up are catalysts to additional conversations as we kind of proceed through, are we getting our bearings, uh, with all the, all the decisions that we're, we're, we're faced with.
Thank you.
Yi Ching, I think you bring, um, a, a great perspective to our work on, from wherever you draw it from, your life experience, your worldview, which forms personal opinions and philosophy and so on, but you bring it well, and it's good.
So with that, um, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Who's left? Nick?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yi Ching?
Aye.
Debs' eye as well. So thank you too. Uh, in that particular order, Brian Mantor, Assistant Town Manager, Nancy Pocari, our, um.
No, Brian's not the Assistant Town Manager.
I'm sorry, Brian. I don't think I wished that on you. That's, that's, that's a lot of stress. Assistant Town Engineer, um, Nancy, you are what you are. I don't even, wait, you're, you're Town Manager, Nancy. Would you like to be Town Manager? Um, Nancy is our retorting secretary. Thank you to WinCam, thank you to Richard Lee, and thank you everyone out there in TV land. We will see you in one week. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Recording.
[Music]